Hi, good evening and thanks for coming. My name is Maddie Anderson and we're going to get started here. If you have thought of a question, there are still note cards back there and you're welcome to just come on up and put them in the basket. I want to just let everybody know that our Iowa caucuses are coming up on February 5th. I hope that you will all be gathering in your precincts where we will be electing new precinct leaders and delegates to the convention. If you need to find out where that is, if you go to storydemms.org or iowademocrats.org, there will be a link there where you can find out where that location is. Then, coming up on June 5th, we will be having a primary where we'll be electing our nominees and out of the four candidates that we have running for the Iowa US 4th District House, you'll be voting on that. Two of our candidates are here tonight. We have four candidates and all of them were invited and had planned to be here, though two of our candidates are ill. That is Paul Dahl and LeAnn Jacobson. And now, I will introduce to you, on my right, your left would be Dr. John Passion and JD Shulten. And I'll each give them a few minutes to introduce themselves, so John, you can go first.
Okay. Greetings and thank you all for coming. My name is John Passion, I'm a pediatrician, I've been here in Ames, we've been far in clinics since about 1990. I got into this race because in my role as a pediatrician, I've had to counsel a family because they are, they may lose their home healthcare nursing for their severely disabled son. I've had a parent tell me that they have to reassure their child that if agents from the federal government won't come in late at night and take her away, even though they're in this country legally. I deal with hundreds of young men and women who are working so hard to build a good life for their family and they can't even afford daycare. In my campaign, I talk about affordable healthcare, I talk about the need for compassion and fair immigration policy, and I talk about jobs. In my role as a medical volunteer overseas, I've come to the conclusion that we're all alike. We all want our loved ones to have access to healthcare when they're ill. We all want to live in safety and sleep without fear. And we all want our children to do better than we've done. These are the guiding principles that should guide all of us in everything we do and certainly will guide me when I go to Washington. Again, my name's John Passion, I'm running against Steve King in the 4th Congressional District. Thanks.
My name is JD Shulten and I'm coming today from Sioux City, Iowa. And I just want to thank everybody for coming out and seeing the size of crowd excites me. And, I mean, what is it, 8 degrees outside in January, we've got 11 months to go, like this, this is why there's a chance this year compared to the years of the past. And so, thank you all for coming out and thank you for having us in January because that's making us better. And part of the challenge I'm asking you guys is to make us better. Because whoever it is who's going to go up against Steve King, we need to have a darn good candidate because it's not easy going up against an eight-time incumbent. And the second thing I would like to mention, it's a little bit different than my campaign. I'm from Sioux City. And Sioux City along, this district has an edge, but Sioux City has a specific edge because we're in western Iowa. And growing up, I played sports. And anytime we went down to Des Moines, we had that extra edge to play those teams because we wanted to get them because they got all the press, they got all everything. And I feel that the parallels are similar in this race and in politics. And so, right now, in my home district, we have a special election on January 16th. And we have a great candidate and I have a sign for her, Rita DeYoung. And my goal is to make sure you all know about Rita DeYoung because she was my high school vice principal. And she's a wonderful candidate and we need your help. On her website, which is ritaforiowa.com, you can go up there and phone bank. And we're all in this together. And it's, you can do it from the comforts of your home, your warm home. And I'll be door knocking this weekend, it'll be a little bit cold, but it'll be worth it. And not only did I know Rita, her daughter graduated with me. Her husband was my freshman basketball coach, we won the city championship. And, but this is the thing that really makes her, I think, a great candidate is the fact that when I text my mom and my sister when she announced, they were more excited about that than they were about me running for Congress. So anyways, thank you very much for having me tonight and yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's get started. Each of the candidates will have two minutes to respond and we'll take turns on who gets to go first, so we'll start out with John Passion, we'll go first on this one. What are your ideas for making it easier for workers to collectively bargain?
Well, I think, oh, thank you. Okay, so we can look at it. Well, a lot of this has to do with what can go on in the state legislature. Though, right now, they took off the, they took out the opportunities for collective bargaining and I think that that needs to be brought back in. That's not going to be something we're going to be doing a lot in Washington, but I do think that supporting union rights are very, very important and certainly, I'm a big union supporter. And that's kind of the biggest thing that I would do at this point. I would try to encourage our state legislators and certainly our new governors, especially if they're a Democrat governor, which we hope they will be, to bring back those type of collective bargaining rights.
Yep, I would like to, sorry. I don't know how we do the pass over.
You know, I'll turn to you and say, okay, there you go.
All right. Yeah. I, any attack on American workers, I feel, are cynical and disingenuous. And what we saw last, with the, what's happened down in Des Moines the last session, really is an attack on the working class. And if you look at the working class and the parallels between that and unions, then you'll see the demise in the American history in the past few decades. And that's something we got to revitalize. And it shouldn't, we should definitely restore the collective bargaining that we've lost so far.
If elected, what committees would you choose to serve on?
Oh, yep. Definitely agriculture. I would love to be in the most rural district in Iowa. I think it's our duty to be an advocate for the farm bill. Energy and commerce are, is one I'm very interested in. I love what's happening in solar and I love what's happening in renewable wind energy and I want to be at the forefront of that. The judicial, I have a legal background. The last decade, I've been working in law as a paralegal, both at law firms and in-house at an innovation company. And then, the Climate Solution Caucus, it's not a committee, but what they do is you get paired. And so, I would find a freshman Republican and you have to go in and choose. And that's, that's one I would love to be at the forefront, so.
Biggest one committee I'd like to join is the healthcare committee. I really want to work towards affordable healthcare, bringing back, bringing to play the public option and refinancing and renewing the Affordable Care Act. I think that will be my area of expertise. While I am not a big policy wonk, I do know what will work and what will not work in the real world. That'll be a big thing I'd like to go into. Like JD, I would also like to serve on any agricultural committee. I think that we live in an agrarian state. And while Story County or Ames might not be very agricultural, we have an agrarian economy and I want to be a big part of that. I would like to work on any type of immigration reform. I think that that is the thing that is near and dear to my heart, is making sure that we have a fair and compassionate immigration policy. I think that's important for our economy as well as important for our soul.
You are addressing a Steve King-friendly crowd in Plymouth County. What is your 30-second elevator speech?
My 30-second what?
Elevator speech.
Question, do we get two minutes to answer it?
Somebody has a question, it's up to you.
Okay. What I try to emphasize in a very brief speech to any type of Steve King supporter is, I'd acknowledge Steve King and the importance of loyalty, but I would also bring up the point that how long can they continue to have a congressman who has not passed a single legislation in 14 years? He has not had anything that he has authored or co-authored that has gotten out of committee. And while I understand loyalty, I understand the fact of conservatism and not liking Democrats, there comes a point where you have to have someone who actually can do something and do the job for you. He's been in there for 14 years.
That was 30 seconds, but you're welcome to keep on.
Okay, but anyways. You know, my 30-second elevator speech has never worked out. And that'd be the thing that I would try to emphasize to a King-friendly, a King-friendly group.
I have a little bit of a, I'll let you know when I start the 30 seconds. Not to be too bossy or anything. No. I'll just give a little bit of background is that my dad's from Lyon County and so, I've spent a lot of time growing up in northwest Iowa, from Sioux City all the way up to the Minnesota border. And so, I understand a lot of these folks and basically, this is where I'll start going. I'm fighting for your job, I'm fighting for your wage and your paycheck, and I'm fighting for your healthcare and I'm fighting for your kid's education. That's what it boils down to. And that crosses the aisle. It crosses, it doesn't matter who you voted for in the past, that's what I'm going to do and fight for you and fight for this district.
Just for plus 30 seconds, okay. And do I ever gave us this question? You have another question on here, which I will just put it back into the basket so it is, it may be drawn later, but I'm going to move on to somebody else's question. Under what circumstances would you support the use of military force and under what circumstances would you oppose the use of military force?
What I am against, and I'll say this first, is that in 2002, I was a college senior, I'd finished my eligibility up and I took a 20-hour bus ride from Lincoln, Nebraska through the middle of the night to go to DC to protest the potential war with Iraq. And we're still there. And I'm against never-ending conflicts and wars. I view, I view times are changing and I don't necessarily think the next war is going to be the war that we know. I think it's going to be a cyber war. And I'll say this, Steve King wants a wall, I want a wall. But it's a border, it's not a border wall, it's a cyber wall. And you see that with what Russia has done to us, who knows what the Chinese are doing to us right now? The fight, the next world war, I'm fairly, I'm confident is going to be cyber warfare.
I agree with the thought about cyber warfare, that's a very good point. I've been around when we debated the Iraq and Afghanistan wars. I've also known people who have been in the Vietnam War. I really do not think that we are, we are in a position where we should invade a country. We have the military ability to strike where we want to and we own the air and that's how we should use our military force. To sit here and say that we should not use our military force at all, we're like the last big dog on the planet, to be quite honest. And whether or not we like it, we are the policemen of the world. And we're actually in a, I think we're in a very good position to be that. We are the single most moral superpower that's ever been known in history. You think about it, what, when has Rome ever invaded a country and then left it? Made it better and then gone on and just left it? They finally had to be driven out. We commonly do that. When we do invade, we tend to keep, try to make the country better than it was before we leave. And then, we tend to leave because we're not colonists. I think that says a lot for our moral ability as a military, as a military in any type of military action. I don't think that there should be any type of military action done without a lot of good intelligence and we have to make sure, the bottom line is, that it threatens us or the stability of the world. Whether we like it or not, that's a role that's been dealt with us.
Okay, thank you. Do you think you can find common ground with Republicans on any issues and if so, on what issues?
Well, you know, I kind of, as a physician, I kind of have a lot of, shall we say, Republican friends and a lot of people that we, that I have lunch with that are Republicans. When I was looking at whether or not I was going to run, I had a conversation with a very, shall we say, conservative newspaper editor in Manson, Iowa. I'm not sure if he really likes me to keep using his name, Ed Sturgis, but I am. And it was, he, I told him what I was doing there. I was looking at running against Steve King and I wanted to know what the issues were in the 4th District. And he started talking about things that I did not think were very important and I didn't agree with him, but as we continued to talk, as, he mostly did the talking, but as I continued to listen, we got to issues that we could both agree needed to be addressed. Clean water and term limits, by the way. And so, my feelings are that virtually anybody, if you listen to them, if you keep the conversation going, that you will get common ground eventually. And I think that's what's missing right now in Washington, there's not enough people that are talking. One of the things that Newt Gingrich did was, he told the House of Representatives to go home on the weekend, go back to your districts, don't stick around in Washington. Well, the problem with that is, while it's good to get back to your district, the problem with that is, is that when you're stuck in Washington DC, you're going to have lunch with your colleagues from both sides of the aisle. And during those meals, you'll talk. And you'll talk about different things and you'll get to know each other. And you'll find that common ground that will, that will relate to when you're in a committee together. It's one of the reasons that when I go to Washington, my goal will be to eat with somebody on the other side of the aisle at least once a week. I like to talk and I like to eat, as you can probably tell by looking at my body habitus.
And I really like that idea too. I would like to preface this with, what is a regular Republican? Because the one that I thought, growing up, wouldn't have added to the deficit with $1.5 trillion in the tax. So I thought, I'm a pretty frugal person personally. I wouldn't, I would think that a fiscal responsibility would be something I'd come with, but who knows? But I think the main thing that we can do, and I think it's a necessity, is infrastructure. Now, there's going to be a debate on what it is and how much and all that stuff, but I think there can be, that's something that can actually bring America together. I'm optimistic with that. The other thing is, I, my background, a lot of you know, is I used to play professional baseball. And it didn't matter who my shortstop was, if he was from Delaware, if he was from the Dominican Republic or Texas. We had that common goal and we worked our tails off for that common goal. And that's, that's the mindset that I have going to Washington. Washington has let us down so much in the last decade-plus and it's time that we start working together. And I, I'm eager for debates to happen, so that's it.
If you had to say off the top of your head, what economic sector interest groups would you say have given you the most money?
Is it my turn?
Yes. Whoever answered last is.
Oh, right, right, sorry. None. But I, I will say, I will say this, my campaign's very close with the tech community. I worked in innovation the last couple of years. We have actually gotten an endorsement from a group called Tech Solidarity and they're working with us. My campaign, well, here's, last election, almost, they said every campaign was broken into. And that, and what they did was, one of the things they're helping us with was security. And so, our campaign is secure. We use a few specific apps, we, security keys, we go through a lot of hoops to make sure that our stuff's protected. And that's, I think, something important to our democracy is to have that cybersecurity. So I would, technology is something that's close to our campaign.
I don't know the answer to that question. I've been getting a lot of different donations from basically all over. I've been getting a lot of small donations, I've been getting some large donations. We've been doing pretty well on ActBlue and most of those people are responding to our emails. I don't, to be quite honest, I don't spend a lot of time looking at seeing who's giving me money. I would like to run this campaign despite that. But I do, will tell you that we are, seem to be getting a whole lot of small donations and I really like it, but the best donation I had, in fact, I didn't even want it deposited in the bank, I really wanted it to, when Lauren Kowalier gave me a $10 check that she wrote on her own. And I just, I really, we had this debate in the campaign, I wanted to just frame that check, but they made me put it in the bank.
Can I add one thing or is that not sensible?
Yeah, I think, because there's only two candidates, if you guys want to, well, maybe it's not fair to change in the middle yet.
I'm just kidding.
Well, and also, there will be time at the end where each of you will, you know, have several minutes to do follow-up work. It's up to John, I'll let John decide.
I don't think I've said this publicly yet, but I will, I won't take a dime from any corporation that's not willing to invest in jobs in this district, so.
Today, it was announced that the Department of Justice was rescinding Obama administration policies which allowed states the ability to determine the status of marijuana in their own states. Let's be honest, here in Ames, we have a large population of students who have a deep and abiding interest in policy towards cannabis. On the issue of marijuana's legal status, where do you stand?
Me?
Yeah, we could use the.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay, that's okay, that's okay. Oh, the marijuana question. Always one of my personal favorites. You know, to be quite honest, first of all, I'm going to state that there may be a wave of going on in this country where we might not have any choice about this. But my personal opinion is, I'm not in favor of legalizing recreational marijuana. I know too much as a doctor about what it can do to people and I've seen what it's done. What I am in favor of is some common sense approach to the marijuana laws. It is insane that we cannot have farmers grow hemp which has no minimum of any THC in it. It's also nuts that marijuana on the schedule, I have to do a little explanation. The Drug Enforcement Agency has five schedules for medications. They go from five to one. Five is the least addictive and the least dangerous and one is the most dangerous, most addictive and has absolutely no medical indications for it. So things like amoxicillin is a level five, four, things like Ritalin is a schedule two and heroin and PCP and marijuana is a schedule one. And cocaine is a schedule two. So there you go. The first thing that I would really like to do is to bring some sanities back to the laws, is to make marijuana a schedule two drug. That way, you'll basically be legalizing it for medical purposes, but it can only be prescribed for indicated medical purposes. So Ritalin, shall we say, is indicated for ADD, but if I start prescribing it for weight loss, I'm going to lose my license. So that will also allow more research to be done on the medicinal uses of marijuana. So I think that's what should be done. Now, am I going to say that this is something that we might not be able to stop it and marijuana might be legalized? It really might be, but I'm going to also come out and tell you that I'm not in favor of it. I think there probably are medical indications for marijuana in some things. I think right now, we cannot research it because it's a schedule one. And I also think the current laws are crazy and I think it's nuts when our prisons are full with young black men who have a little bit over an ounce of marijuana. So, that's my thoughts on that.
I just wanted to note quickly, if you're going over just a little bit over two minutes, I'm just going to let you continue because we, a lot of your questions, neither one of you have used your full two minutes, so there's going to be a lot of leeway there, so I'll try not to interrupt you unless we're getting up to three or four minutes.
That's, if I, if I go above 2 minutes and 15 seconds, cut me off. So, I actually came from a state that legalized marijuana and to me, I didn't really notice the difference. The same city park that smelled like weed, still smelled like weed. But the things that it did affect, because it was the federal schedule, the businesses couldn't get a tax break, they had banking issues. And so, there's a lot of danger in having that much cash on hand. So I'm for rescheduling. But I think the number one reason why I'm for rescheduling is because the VA is not allowed to prescribe medical cannabis to veterans. And I've met too many veterans and I've heard too many stories and read too much about the uppers from PTSD that you have to get up to get in the morning and take, and the downers to get down at night. And a lot of what I read and heard and talked about, or listened to about, is medical marijuana could really help that. And I think we owe it to our veterans to get it rescheduled and so it allows for medical marijuana, so.
Yeah, and it's again, to add to that, like JD said, there are probably a lot of uses of medicinal marijuana, but again, it's horribly difficult to study it because it's a schedule one drug. And so, what he says is right. If we get it rescheduled, those type of uses could be looked into.
Do you think there's room in the Democratic Party for persons with centrist views? For instance, is there room for the opinion that smaller government with fewer and less burdensome regulation is desirable?
Very specific question, I think absolutely. I think the Democratic Party is a very broad term and I hate labels. I, people ask me all the time, are you this, are you that? And I'll use the old Paul Wellstone, I'm from the Democratic side of the Democratic Party. And so, I think we have a big tent and I think it's open for all those who want to be there.
My, my feelings on that is, people on either extreme are not good. People who are totally, completely, absolutely Democratic liberals, I don't know if I'd want them running the government. But then, I do not want either the government being run by people who are totally conservative Republicans either. I think that this country is a centrist country and I think that the way that we can actually govern is by being centrist. And I think really, at least I know from JD, that he is actually, you've got a couple of centrist candidates up here. That's okay for me to say that about you? Maybe not?
People can decide. I'll say this is that.
So maybe not.
I'm not for, I'll use the Tracy Fries line, I stole it from her. And it's, I'm not for a bigger government, I'm not for a smaller government, I'm for a better government, so.
That's great, that's a great line. Tracy Fries, if you don't know, she's running for Iowa Senate in, I don't remember the number, it's, it's parts of Northern Story and Hamilton and 25, we think. Maybe she might be running in one of your districts, I'm not sure. Louis, do you know?
No.
Okay.
Put you on the spot.
This is kind of a. This is kind of a rhetorical question, but I'll go ahead and read it. What makes Trump think he can shut down a book that he doesn't like?
Oh, but, no, to be sure everyone heard that, she's running against Bill Dix.
Yes, oh yes, yes.
That's the, that's the
That's an important part. What makes Trump think he can shut down a book he doesn't like? Nothing that interferes with free press or free speech is great.
I guess I don't really understand.
I don't know.
The question, it's kind of an interesting question. What makes Trump think he can shut down a book that he doesn't like?
It's asking you to get into his mind, I guess.
Oh, okay, this is a free speech question. Okay, all right, yes, yes, absolutely. Yeah, I don't know why he thinks that. I certainly don't. Remember, the freedom of speech is the first bill of rights and freedom of press, and I think that's really important. My wife was a journalism major, and I'm very enamored with the role that the press plays in making, in having them as the fourth branch of government. I think they need to be accountable, of course, and I think for the greatest amount of press, they are accountable to themselves. And I think they need to be encouraged, and they need to not be limited.
I, it's really interesting to see where we're at in America, and to see how, some of the things that we took for granted, how they're going to be in three years, four years, five years. And it's, things are being challenged, but also, you get to see some of the pillars of America and how we are meant to be, and so it's definitely an interesting time. Man, this one election is going to have such an effect on so many outcomes in the next decade and in the rest of my life. I feel like we're going to look back in 20, 40 years and we'll talk about Trump and what has come from that. I mean, it's a four-year process, but it's going to be something like September 11th where we always, we remember. So.
Do you support Medicare for All?
Yes. I, well, yes. I think, the first thing, healthcare is my number one issue, and it's for several reasons. In America, the average, I have a specific number here, so I'm going to look, the average we spend per capita on healthcare is $8,745. The industrial world average is $3,484, so we double that. I am for an immediate public option so we can stabilize the markets, and I'm for an immediate Medicare buy-in for 55-plus so the folks who want to retire can. One thing that really bothers me is 60% of all bankruptcies are healthcare-related. Like, and
Sorry, that's me.
And, and when I was playing baseball, I was bouncing around from living for three months here, six months here, playing baseball in seven different countries, and healthcare, like, I was jumping from program to program to health insurance, and a lot of times, I didn't have it, either because I couldn't afford it or I was only going to be somewhere for a month, and I was taxing my body, the most I ever have in my life. And, I mean, I battled bicep tendonitis, but I, my health insurance was praying, and I was lucky. And there's so many stories you hear about, and in the most effective way, the most cost-effective way, the solution is there, and I think it's Medicare for All, that long-term goal for Medicare for All, so, so yes, I believe in it.
Yeah, very good. Yes, and I will want to just state that that was, I think that statistic was before the Affordable Care Act, where that was 50% of people, personal bankruptcies were due to healthcare costs, and that's one of the things the Affordable Care Act really took out at the knees. And that's why I'm a big fan of, the first thing we have to do is we have to stabilize it, we have to refinance it, and we have to renew it and repair it because it's not perfect. The first step of that is, which was what JD talked about, was bringing in the public option, the chance that people can buy into Medicare. And I think that would be a great run, because that's what we're talking about is a single payer system, okay? Let's just, you know, Medicare for All is a discussion about the single payer system. There are a lot of things that happened with the Affordable Care Act that we didn't know was going to happen, good and bad. Like, one of the things that wasn't good that happened was that not enough young people signed up for it. Even with the penalty, they didn't sign up for it. So we didn't have a lot of healthy people in the pool, so medicine was still expensive. But something else that happened that wasn't really, they thought it was going to happen, but they didn't think it was going to happen this well. For the first time, the cost of medicine, the rise was decreasing for the first time in 20 years when the Affordable Care Act went into play. So if anyone tells you that that didn't happen when the Affordable Care Act went into play, they're wrong, and that's what is, did happen. So the Affordable Care Act was a great first step, but unfortunately, over the past seven years, we've not been allowed to make the next step. I think that a single payer system is something this country is going towards. I think, I think a, I think a public option is a great dry run, so we can see what's good about it, what's bad about it, how we can change it. And, because, let's admit it, I've kind of been practicing medicine in all different parts of the world. We have a very complex medical system here. It's good and it's bad. There's a lot of things that are not good about it, but there are a lot of things that need to be continued, and we have to be, we have to make sure that that happens. But, so, short answer is, yes.
How are you organizing rural Democrats and independents?
Okay. Close to me? Well, right now, we're still at kind of the beginning part of our campaign. We're starting to make contacts with the local Democratic Party. We'll plan to be out there a fair amount. Didn't do a lot over the past month because of the holidays, but before that, we continue to, the campaign continues to meet with people, anyone who wants to talk with us. We're going to be working on having a good, good representation in the caucuses, and basically, the bottom line is, we're just going to kind of try to get our message out there as best we can.
We, I, since we launched, I've been in all 39 counties. Haven't necessarily had an event in all 39 counties, missing Harden, but I've been through it. But from here to Lyon County, we're really focusing on talking with county captains, or getting volunteers to be county captains, really pushing for a program that really organizes this district. I feel this district has been abandoned by the Democratic Party, and part of what we're doing and part of what my campaign is, to have a legacy far beyond when my campaign's done, and far beyond when my political career is done, whether it's 20 years, whether it's November, whether it's June. And one of the most important things about our campaign is organizing, getting out there, and having that person-to-person contact. One thing that I'm working my tail off on fundraising is to get a Winnebago, they're made in the district, want to throw my logo on the side and be non-stop once it thaws. And I think that will allow enough contact between people who are not decided on who they're going to vote for, and supporters to get them, make sure that they're, they continue to stay interested, and that's been a vision of mine from day one, and I might be a little bit nutty, but I don't even know if my 6'6" frame can fit in one. But by God, that's where my focus is.
Right by you.
Through the district. I'll have one on the back.
This question is pretty similar to the elevator speech question, but I'll read it, and if you think that you would like them to answer, then raise your hand if you want them to answer this question. How will you sell yourself to Republicans in Northwest Iowa? Should we just move on?
Well, yeah, I think that's a good, I think that's a good question.
Raise your hand if you want them to answer.
I think that's a good question.
Yeah, I think, go ahead. I thought it was pretty similar to another question was why we asked.
And thank you. Northwest Iowa's interesting. And I want to start off with a story. And I've been able to get into a lot of doors because of my athletic background that a lot of traditional politicians probably haven't. I went to a West Lyon football game, and it's amazing, like, I don't know how many people live in that county, but I would be shocked if there was anybody that stayed home at this game. And one of my best friends is Darren Notches, and he played football and basketball, no, football and baseball at Stanford, and he was All-State in four different sports here. He was one of the greatest high school athletes ever to come out of Iowa. And he lives in Sioux Falls, and he met me at a bar before the game, and people were coming up to him all, like, people, I mean, obviously, they literally look up to him because he's 6'7", but he's such a big figure in that community. And I was with him, and he introduced me to everyone, and he goes, this is the guy who was going after Steve King. And that county is 80% Republican. And I handed out my card, and on my card, right there, says Democrat, and they all take a look at it, and they go, you got my support. And it's having those engagements in this, in this district. I'm a fifth-generation Iowan, and having connections throughout the district, I think is very key, in part, to really make a difference in this race. And we're seeing things we've never seen before in Sioux County, and a lot of encouraging things. Do I plan to win Sioux County? Well, let's not go there, but, but by God, I'm working my tail off to get 25% in that district, or in that county, and that's going to, with the turnout we have here, and we do well in Ames, and we get 25% there, things are looking good. So, that's my long-winded answer.
Well, I'm going to fail completely on the sports analogy, so, so I think JD beats me on that clearly. I will try to convince people that I'm a reasonable man, and as, and that I have some background in healthcare, some background in education. I also will try to convince people that I listen. One of the biggest things you learn in medicine, and we're taught this from the beginning, that 90% of your diagnosis is made by history. And when you sit there and just listen, that's when you know what's going on. And I think if I can bring any skill to the table, it's the fact that I listen. And even if it doesn't look like I'm listening, I'm hearing everything. So that's what I hope to do. But yeah, it's not going to be the sports thing, sorry.
I think the medical analogy worked well, too. I think a medical analogy worked well, too.
Right, yeah, I know, but it'll probably get more people with a sports thing.
Okay, next question. Do either of you own any type of firearm or hunt, and how is your position as opposed to the NRA's position on gun ownership and availability?
Did you first or me first? I don't own a gun. I have very, I know a lot of hunters, my family, because they live out in the country, they own a couple of guns, but I don't own one myself. I will tell you, though, that I like to shoot. You know, we go out and we target shoot by the barn, kind of have a good time, but I don't hunt. And I'm not a hunter, but I know of many hunters, my brother-in-law's a big hunter. He's a member of the NRA, and he represents the rank and file of the NRA, where he is very big into gun safety, and I'm really big into gun safety, obviously, being a pediatrician. And he's also into background checks. He's into saying that people don't need to own silencers or bump stocks, which is the greatest majority of the NRA. And I think the reason that we're not getting decent, common sense gun control laws out there is because the lobbyists are driving the conversation. And lobbyists are driving the conversation because they're being paid by the gun manufacturers. And once we get them out of that situ, out of that role, I think then we can get good gun control, or decent gun control laws. I will, I want to kind of end with the fact that I don't think this is a pipe dream. I was not a member of the American Medical Association until about eight years ago. Being a member of the American Medical Association is we have to pay dues, so we all don't have to be a member of it. I've stayed away from the American Medical Association because I thought that they were more concerned about their members and their constituents. In other words, I felt that they were more concerned about physicians than they were about patients. I think they heard that there were a lot of people like me not joining, and they changed their tact, and the American Medical Association saw the writing on the wall and came out in favor of healthcare reform, and they were one of the biggest and early backers of the Obama-era Affordable Care Act. And that's when I joined them, and I'm still a proud member because they continue to push for healthcare reform, even though, in all respects, healthcare reform will make my standard of living go down, it will make my patient's standard of living go up, and we think, and now my organization, the AMA, is in favor of that. So I think the NRA can do that, too. If they see the light and they realize that if they come to the table, they can help us develop good gun control laws.
I don't own a gun, but I own a bow. I'm not a hunter, I like archery. But I'll say this, when it comes to gun safety, I second that on who's pushing the envelope here, and I don't think it's any secret, it's lobbyists and the money, but I'll say this, is that there's several things that I think can get support right now in DC. One is universal background check. One is stopping the loopholes at gun shows. Another one is, the only thing that I would do is with domestic violence, people with history of domestic violence, is not allow them to get a gun. I think with manufacturing, make it harder to scratch off or take the serial number off. I think to help law enforcement, to have a connection between the bullet and the cartridge and the gun, to have some sort of, the technology is there to trace that. And the last thing, I think, is making it sure it's secured safely, because then we don't have the theft and we don't have the child accidents with that. So I think those things are absolutely doable right now.
Where do you stand on the 20-week abortion ban? Do you support the 20-week abortion ban?
I don't. The whole issue of abortion is very difficult for me because I'm Catholic. But what it boils down to is a couple of things. One, Roe v. Wade will be 45 years old this year, and I'm 37, so my whole lifetime, that's all I know. And what that said was that the Constitution allows a woman's privacy. And I firmly believe in women's rights, and the fact that I don't want the federal government in that doctor's office and getting in between the doctor and the patient. 99% of all abortions are done before the week 21, and the 1% that doesn't are usually a result of a medical emergency. So what, what can we do to reduce abortions? I think universal healthcare, so, because having a kid is pretty expensive. I think education and promoting that, because if we just promote abstinence, that's not solving anything. And the last thing is having access to contraceptives. The only piece of legislation that has been correlated to the reducing the amount of abortions is, has happened in Colorado, and what they did was they allowed, despite income, whatever you had, they provided IUDs. And that reduced abortions by 42%. And in teen And in teen pregnancies, or teen abortions, they reduced that 67%. So there's, there's some things we can do on that. So, but I'm absolutely for women's rights.
First of all, I'd just like to speak a little bit about the 20-week abortion. That is a distraction. The percentages of times that it comes into play is so minimal. And just like JD said, the greatest majority are done well before that, and mostly in the first trimester. So it's basically, I view that as a distraction. My, getting back to the root of the issue, is stance on abortion. My stand and my feelings on abortion are molded by my life experiences. When I volunteered in Clarkstown, Mississippi, which was in the Delta, I ran into two Catholic, and I'm Catholic also, I ran into two Catholic nuns who took their vows and then went back to medical school to become physicians. So they were Sister Dr. Mary Francis. And they served the poorest of that, of the poor in that very, very poor area of the country. There were towns that were the size of Ogden, Iowa, who had an unemployment rate of 100% at that time, when I went there in 1995. Furthermore, Clarkstown in 1995 was number one in the country for not only syphilis, but also teen pregnancy, called Clarkstown. And, and I asked one of them, what they, one of these Catholic nuns who were physicians, what they thought about with birth control. And they said, "We pass it out like water." And that type of practicality in the face of a medical disaster is what molds my views of abortion. An elective abortion is a failure of society on several different levels. However, until society evolves beyond the point of needing an elective abortion, it has to be available, and it has to be safe. And furthermore, I will, and I think we all have to work towards making abortions unnecessary. If I was president, not that I ever will be president, I would like to be known for a presidency that actually, or even a run in Congress, that during that run, we saw the need for abortions to decrease. And that will mean supporting and funding places like Planned Parenthood. And that's, I think, has to be our stand as Democrats and all of us, that we support people that make abortions unnecessary.
Next question. If Republicans retain their majority in the House of Representatives, what can House Democrats do or offer to have influence on legislation affecting funding of Democrat priorities?
I think that comes down to how we can work across the aisle. And I think that's what we're gonna need to do. I think that, last thing I looked was, we would have to gain, like, I think, about 35 seats at this next election to become a majority. I don't know what the, what the rate would have to be in the Senate, and whether there's a chance of that with the next elections in 2018. So I think there's gonna be a good chance that even if we do have a majority, it won't be a strong one. And we need to basically work across the aisle. We need to find out what our colleagues need and what they want. And also, we need to find that common ground. And like I talked before, we need to continue to talk with people, we need to meet with people, we need to socialize. I don't want to say "socialize with the enemy," but, you know, in many respects, we have to be able to talk with them. And we have to be able to listen. And I think that's the biggest thing that we can offer.
Yeah, I mean, when you're in the minority like you are right now, it's, there's, you're very limited with the options. I guess when I was growing up and first interested in politics, I got to, or I read an article about Ted Kennedy and some of the things that he did, and behind-the-scenes things, and that really fascinated with me. It seems like you don't see that or hear about that in DC anymore. I, it's tough. And it's tough being a Democrat right now, and it's tough being a Democrat in the fourth congressional district, seeing what's happening in Des Moines and seeing what's happened nationally. And so we need to start winning. And, and, like, I'll say it again, seeing so many people here tonight, this just fires me up. And to make that change, I don't, and I'll say this, I don't expect to be in a minority come after November. So, I'm dodging that question.
You should try and be a Democrat in the doctor's lounge before.
Do you support or oppose term limits?
Uh, I'm definitely open to it. I don't. Here's, they, so I went to the University of Nebraska when I transferred for my senior year, for strictly baseball reasons. I don't advise any college student to transfer your senior year. And there was a gentleman out of Omaha named Ernie Chambers. And he was a fighter. And the Panhandle Republicans hated him, absolutely hated him. And they passed a law for term limits. Well, it backfired, because every, all those Panhandle guys were, have been there a lot longer than Ernie Chambers, and so it backfired on them. But I, I like getting new blood in there all the time, and I'm definitely open to it. I, I haven't really took a stance on it yet, so, I'm, but I'm still open to it.
Three terms. If I can't do what I need to do in three terms, I shouldn't be there. And that's what I will vow to. I'm of the personal opinion that the House of Representatives needs to be full of amateurs. I, and this may be my, you know, watching the Parliament in England, but I think that the House of Representatives need to be like a House of Commons. And they need to get people in there, do their stint, and get back into the workforce. And so, three terms, that's it.
Okay. That also was another question on that card, so it went back into the basket. We'll move on to somebody else's. What is your position on Guantanamo?
I think Guantanamo should be closed. Everything I've heard about it, I've not been very thrilled about it. I think that those type of areas that are out of the country, I don't think are good for good legal process. And if we need to have prisoners, they should be here on the United States soil. I feel kind of like, a little bit like, it's a weird situation to have it overseas.
I agree. From a legal standpoint, it's, it really has complicated a lot of fundamentals. And one thing, though, that, there's gotta be something there that isn't as publicly known as what we know. And so, as an outsider, as somebody who lives in Iowa and just kind of has read it through the papers and everything, I think it absolutely should be closed, and we should move on. I mean, Obama said he would do it day one, and he didn't. I don't know. So, but I think it should be closed.
There were more questions on that card as well. We'll move on. Your number-one reason that an independent rural voter that last voted for King should now vote for you?
Healthcare. It affects everybody. And, like what we mentioned before, on, you just go through this district, and you hear story after story. My first speech was at the wingding up the surf ballroom up in Clear Lake. And after I got done, I mean, I was nervous. And so after I got done, I went to grab a beer. And while I was back there, this woman came up to me, and she introduced her daughter, and they had these shirts on, and this, her, this woman's granddaughter, seven years old and had leukemia. And the mom had to quit her job to help take her to appointments and everything. And that just affected me so much, because she goes, "We need someone out there to fight for us." And she goes, "I like your passion, and I like your energy, and we need, we needed you." And that, that's when it got real for me, being a candidate. And I think about that every day. And so...
Gosh darn it, does he have to be such a racist? You know? And I don't know how well that's gonna play in Northwest Iowa, to be quite honest, in our fourth district. I think healthcare will play very well, because they are, our district is full of what's called critical access hospitals. Hospitals that require support from the government, specifically in Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement. And as they cut Medicaid reimbursement, it's gonna cause many of these hospitals to close. And that means that they'll have to go, and they will see this in the next year or two. Many of them are on the borderline already if they cut Medicaid. As they, because of the cuts of Medicaid, I predict that many will close this year. And no longer will they be able to go 20 hours for their heart attack, they'll have to go 80 to 100. And people will die. And I think that will hit them right at home. And I think, you know, Iowans expect our elected officials to work. We don't expect them to do everything we want them to do, because I think we're very realistic as a state. But we do expect them to work. We do expect them to get things done. And I think that that's something that we can talk about. The racism thing will be a little bit hard. It hits me a little bit too much at home, and makes me too angry sometimes, maybe, to talk about it clearly. But we'll give it a try. But those are the things I would talk about.
What factor sets you apart from politics as usual?
Neither of us are politicians. Well, two things that are same of both of us, is we both never run before. And I am not a politician. I like to say that I, when people call me a politician, I kind of say I'm not a politician till I've won. For myself personally, because I'm not a politician, I am, and I'm not a very good liar, I will always try to tell you the truth. I will always be straightforward. I'll be, I will tell you what I'm thinking. You might not agree with what I say, but you will at least know where I stand. I'm a, I'm a terrible poker player. And if anyone who plays poker, if there's anyone in the room from my poker group, Steve Kowler, they'll know that I'm not very good at the game. I show my hand too easily. So, but that is what will probably set me apart from other politicians. We should play poker sometimes. That's what everybody says.
Well, right now, the average person in Congress is 57 years old, and their net worth is $1 million. I'm 20 years younger, and just shy of $1 million less of that average. And so, I'm definitely an outsider when it comes to a lot of these things, but at the end of the day, I think there's just a lack of working-class voices in DC right now. And I come from a long line of educators and farmers. And, and I guess that's what I'm bringing to the table, so.
This question, it's somewhat similar to one that we've already had, so I'll let you decide if you wanna, because there's high interest in this, obviously. How would you relate to rural Iowans in Northwest Iowa? How do you plan to get their votes? Should we have them respond to this question as well?
Yes.
Can you raise your hand so I can kind of get an idea of? Yeah, I think there's high interest, we'll do this one.
Yeah. Well, like I said, one way I'm trying to confuse them is by my Dutch last name. But, no, one thing, if we're afraid to go into Sioux County or Plymouth County, we're gonna get the same result as we have been. And that's why it's so important to go up there and, and try to have these relatable moments. My, it goes, I was gonna mention my neighbor, but he's not up in Northwest Iowa, so I'll scratch that. But, um, there's, there's a lot of things that we're seeing in Sioux County that we've never seen before. And a lot of it, it's exciting. And here's a couple of things. One, they had Pride Fest, Sioux County. That's amazing. They, they have, well, here's some inside information, that Steve King has an annual fundraiser at these people's house. And they said, "No more." And they cited his stance on immigration, and they cited his vote on healthcare. And the last thing, the president of Dork and the president of Northwestern are both pro DACA. And like, there, there's things that are happening there. And when you talk about Sioux County, their backbone is the immigrants that are there. And it is, it's, it's up to us to push for immigration reform that we haven't seen since 1986. And, and what would happen if King got his way? You know? The economy in Northwest Iowa would just be gone. And so, one thing that I'm trying to find is, I'm working with agriculture economists to find, per bushel, how much King's voting record, and by him going down to Mexico on that, that wall and stirring the pot down there, because they're having elections next summer, and a lot of people are running down there on anti-American stuff, and 20% of our corn goes down there. And trying to find, per bushel, that number, saying, "How much that's gonna affect you?" Those are just some of the ways.
Yeah. I think, I think one of the jobs that we're gonna have to do is, we're gonna have to reintroduce Steve King to his district. He's been there for about 15 years now, it'll be 16 by the time the election comes up. And it will be our job as candidates to show them what he's been doing. And I think that that's what, that's what JD's talking about with that. Back to the question about relating to rural Iowans. I'm not a farmer. Can't say my families are farmers. But we come from a very small town in eastern Iowa, Comanche, Iowa. I know farmers very well. I found farmers to be very reasonable people, down-to-earth, intelligent, and for the greatest majority, good stewards of the land. I think anyone can be talked to. Anyone can be listened to. If you, one thing you notice is if you travel any place, that everyone likes to be listened to, everyone likes to be treated with respect. And if you do that, that will go a long way.
May I add one thing?
Well, I was gonna say, the next three questions are all so very similar, I'm gonna read all three of them.
Okay.
And then maybe just give each of you five minutes to talk about this. What can you do to earn the votes of some of the moderate rural conservative voters in the fourth district? You will not win this district without some help from them. So we've, we've kind of covered that, but you can both respond to that as well. Representative King was elected in 2002, and every two years since, with a 60 to 63% vote. What do you think that you can do to reverse this? And then the final one. Steve King, it is an embarrassment to me as an Iowan of the fourth congressional district in our state. In order to beat him in November, I believe the Democratic candidate will need positions on some major national issues, such as gun control, abortion, and immigration, that are tolerable to moderates on both sides of the aisle. The hardcore Democrats will not vote for King under any circumstance, but to win this district, our candidate will need the moderate and reasonable voters from both parties. What position on these issues can you take that will be acceptable to moderates of both parties? It'll need to take away or moderate their fears on these issues to win many small-town and rural voters. So generally, you know, it's, it's basically, they're wanting to know what your, your plans are to win those voters and to reverse the trend of King being elected again. are to win those voters and to reverse the trend of King being elected again.
Do you want to say something? You said you wanted to say something.
Well, I'll just answer.
Okay, thank you. We've both kind of given you what we talked about with gun control and how we feel on abortion, or at least I've told you of mine. A little bit more specific... Be a little bit more specific on immigration and how that can be put into play. Immigrants in our district are a big part of our workforce. And if you talk to any farmer who has livestock, who has a big farm, they want that labor. What they want is they want people to be here legally. And right now, there is no good way for a routine worker to get into this country legally. And because they have to come in illegally or in the shadows, they're afraid to go back because they're afraid they won't be able to come get back. So, in the past, they would come for nine months, go back for three to four months, and then come back and do some more work here. But now, they come and they stay. I would like to see farmers be able to get a workforce that is legal, that they pay reasonably, and if they're immigrants, that we can track. And I think it's important to make sure that we vet immigrants. We need to make sure that there is justice for DACA, the children that have been in this country for so long, who have been brought over with their parents. And I think that those type of issues will resonate with anyone who's reasonable and knows anything about the agricultural economy. I mean, let's admit it. Free-range eggs, pretty popular. But free-range eggs take a lot of labor. And they're going to need the labor. And that's what we have to talk to them about. And we have to get it to them.
When it comes to a game plan for beating the incumbent, nothing's worked. So, I don't really know... It's a difficult question. Do you be moderate? Do you be this? Do you be that? No one's done it. And everything's impossible until you do something. So, I'm not sure what the correct answer is there because it hasn't been done. But I'll say this with rural America. The one thing you really need, that a lot of us who live in cities need to have that mindset of is, they grow crops and they get them out. They export them. They create energy now with the wind energy and solar, and they export that out. They raise their kids and they go to college. And what we've been seeing is they go out. And so, with all that being taken out of them, they don't have that mindset of what the government can do for them. They have that mindset, what the government's going to do to them. And that's a huge difference. And that's something that we, as Democrats, I think, have really lost, that sight. And so, I fully plan to work with them and trying to find solutions with them. I have a family friend that I just found out for the fourth consecutive year, they didn't... They lost money on their farm. And they have a century farm. And the father was retiring. And he said, "Son, I'm renting this out to another farmer. I'm not going to allow you. You're going to have to find another career." And we're starting to see that. We have these farmers who, they got two choices to get their seeds, and they got two choices to get their fertilizer. And the farmers are struggling right now. And it's the first time in King's political career that they are struggling. And where is he? And what is he talking about? He's talking about things thousands of miles away, either in Europe on some political alt-right politician, some prime minister of Hungary, or he's talking about the border wall. It's right here. This is where the people vote him to help the other people, our neighbors. And I think as Democrats, it's our responsibility to get connected back with rural America. And I think that's the mindset that we got to do.
I think the basis of that question is, and I agree with everything he says. As I'm thinking about this question more, I'm kind of wondering if what the issue of whether or not we should compromise some of our principles to try to get votes. And I'm not sure if that was the meaning of the question or not. But I will tell you that that is not what we should do. I mean, we need to stand up for things that are right. We need to understand the people that we're dealing with, and we need to listen to people. And I think that virtually everyone will respect somebody who has a strong stand on something if they know where they're coming from and if they give good reasons for it. And I think that's what we should be able to do. You know, one of the things that editor in Mans and Iowa, Ron Sturgis, again, I think he really hates me using his name. I asked him at the end of our talk, what would be his advice to me if I make it to Washington? And he said, "Just represent us. Don't represent your party. Don't represent Washington. Represent us." That really stuck with me.
What is your plan for legislation on alternative energy?
I'm a huge advocate for it. We have a family farm that is just outside of Lake Mills that we rent out to a family friend, but we have five turbines on it, and we're almost on our 25-year lease, almost the end of that. And I... What I've been... I'm a huge supporter, and I'm absolutely fascinated with what the potential with solar and the potential with wind energy that's out there. In Sioux City, there's a friend of mine who, he works with hog confinements and trying to use solar to cool them in the summer when it's really hot and sunny, and then in the winter when it's sunny and cold, it warms them up. And innovation, to me, is sexy. And I love it, and I want to see where we can continue to grow. And where we've gone in the last decade on solar, not even the last decade, the last couple of years, it's so fascinating. And by the time that I turn 40, three years from now, it's going to be way beyond what it is today. And that's what really excites me. And that's why, one of the reasons I'm doing this, is to have a vision for our district to what's next. Our economy is not what it's used to be. But I would love, love, love to expand solar and innovation in this district.
I concur. One of the biggest things we need to do from a legislative standpoint is to continue the tax credits for solar energy. I think that's one of the best things that's happened ever since those tax credit came in. And I've been watching along the road to my family's house, because it's a three-and-a-half-hour drive, so I get to know these houses. More and more solar panels are being set up on farms and rural houses. I see more solar panels. And when we talk to my neighbors who have solar panels, we talk about the great tax benefits and how it now is becoming cost-effective and part of that. So, that's the first thing we need to do. We need to continue those tax benefits and continue to encourage that from a legal standpoint. I agree too. We need to really kind of push the alternative energy issue. We need to continue to support wind energy in Iowa. I think that should be one... That's one of the proudest things that we do to help with alternative energy is wind energy. And those are kind of the big things. And, you know, I just want to kind of put a play in. I, you know, innovation, technology is really pretty cool, pretty attractive. I don't want to say sexy, but anyways, but pretty cool. And we have in Iowa State, and this is the other thing too, is, I mean, we have this great university here with all this knowledge, not only agricultural knowledge, but engineering knowledge. Ames Lab, which is connected with the Department of Energy. Do you know they're working on a new form of refrigeration that will be cost-efficient, not using Freon, and horribly, and horribly efficient, easy to run, even without a lot of electricity? I mean, we have not had a change in our refrigeration methods for the past 35 to 40 years, and we've gotten as efficient as what we need to do. They're actually developing the basic science to make refrigeration more cost-effective and more energy-efficient. Think about that when you think about poor areas in the world, as well as this country, with proper refrigeration, food safety, medicines, vaccines. That kind of great stuff needs to continue to be encouraged in our district, the state, as well as our country.
This will be a hard campaign. Tell us about your organization so far and how much of Iowa you've been to.
How much of Iowa have been to? Oh, oh, the 4th district. Yeah, I can assume that. My own, I have a... I have kind of a bear-balled campaign right now. We have a consultant, and we have a volunteer campaign manager, as well as a volunteer treasurer. We will be bringing on a manager in January. We have someone kind of starting on a little bit of helping us to fundraise, but right now, it's mostly volunteers and a real grassroots organization. We're going to continue to spread out to that. I've been to, I don't know how many of the counties I've been to. I know I've not been to all 39 yet, to be quite honest, but I think I've been to at least 25 of them. And so, that's kind of where our organization sits at this time.
So, I have a staff, several here tonight. I've got a field organizer. I have a campaign director. I have a campaign coordinator, and I have a campaign, or a finance director. And our strategy is to have one of the best field organization that this district has ever seen. And it's got to be in all corners. And so, when I get to Winnebago, this is the vision, that when I'm not in that particular area, because it's 39 counties, it's larger than Belgium and the Netherlands combined, when I'm not in that area, my presence is still being felt. And that's been our vision from day one. I don't have the Winnebago yet, so I'll say this. Please pray for my car. I put on about 35,000 miles. And, yeah, so, tell you what, I don't know. That's it.
What is your approach to problem-solving?
I think about things way too much. And I love data. I love research, and I absorb. I'm a sponge. And so, when it comes to... I love looking at like statistics. Like, here's a statistic for you. When the last election, 4% of this whole district under-voted in this race. So, they voted for the president and they voted for the other races, but they didn't vote for this campaign, or this race. So, what does that mean? What I like to interpret that as is, and keep in mind, this is at a time when you could get straight ticket. That's, to me, is a member of the Republican Party who says, "I can't do that anymore." And with the straight ticket being off the ballot, that excites me. And that's just kind of a little bit of my mind. So, a little bit of insight to my mind. That's it.
How do you solve a problem? In 1990, when I came to Ames, it didn't take me long to realize that the nursery had a high rate of something called group B strep infection in newborns. Group B strep is a bacteria that can be passed to babies, and if a baby, it gets passed during the birth process. And if a baby gets it, they have a 25% chance of dying. The... I ran into two cases of group B strep infection when I was here for about three months, which I thought was a fair amount. So, I did a little research, and it wasn't hard to do at that time because we had a book where it had all the diagnoses of every baby in the NICU, so I could flick through it. And I found that we had about 1,500 deliveries at that time, and we had about four to five group B strep infections a year. And that was within normal limits to what the rest of the country was seeing. But when I talked to my people in Minnesota, where I just came from training, they said that was in the upper ends of normal. So, I did a little bit more research, found out that there was data out there about ways to hopefully prevent this, but there has not been any real protocol set up yet. So, I went to the American Academy of Pediatrics, got a little bit of grant money, developed a protocol for culturing women for this organism during their pregnancy, and then treating those that were positive with IV penicillin. And I got the input of not only the nurses, the hospital, the pediatricians, but also the obstetricians, which was not an easy thing to do because I was telling the surgeon what to do, which they hate to have done. And our rate of group B strep infection went down significantly. We had a protocol in place at Mary Greeley Medical Center, three years before the University of Iowa was doing it, or before Blang Children's Hospital, NICU, was doing it. By conservative estimation, we saved three babies' lives because of that. That's how you solve problems.
Do you think environmental problems such as water quality and climate change should be a national priority? Are they a priority to you? And how would you demonstrate that if elected?
Yeah, very much. Environmental policies are part of a big priority for me. I will be quite honest, though, we're going to have to see what the 4th district wants to do about it. One of the things I think that made us lose our election in 2016 was the Democrat Party kept talking about global warming, global warming, global warming. I don't think the meat packer in Sioux City gives a rip about global warming. But the farmer down the street probably does, or the farmer out in the field does care about weather variability, and that's what we should talk about. We should talk about things like weather variability and how our zone has changed over the past 15 years. I'm a gardener, and I have, and I save old catalogs. Don't ask me why, but I do. And I swear, the catalog from 15 years ago had us clearly in Zone 4, and now we're in 5. Yep. And that's changed within the time I've been here. And those are the things we can talk to our residents in the 4th district about. I think water quality is something that we can all agree upon, that it's important. How we go about handling it will be a big issue. I think the first thing we have to do is, we have to measure, and we have to measure consistently, because we have to know where we've been to know how well we're doing. And I know that in many respects, some people are against monitoring the water systems, but I really think we need to do that to start with. We need to use Iowa State University and their knowledge and the best agricultural practices to decrease herbicides, pesticides, as well as coliform bacteria in our water system. And we need to watch those things, and we need to make sure that we're doing better over time. I have a... Our neighbor where my family lives in Comanche, Iowa, he's been farming, his family farm, and it's one of those 150-year-old farms. I remember I asked him once when he was going to get his soybeans in, because really, it's like, man, your field doesn't look like it's touched. He goes, "No, the beans are in." I go, "They're in?" He goes, "Yeah, I no-till." "How long have you been no-tilling?" He goes, "Since 1982, when Iowa State University told us to." And I think we need to kind of continue to use that knowledge base. And while... And while being in Ames and being in Story County might not look all that great out to the rest of the fourth district, because we are kind of different here in many respects, I think we can use our knowledge base to kind of help guide those principles and guide how best we should handle that.
Yeah, so I'm a big advocate to, climate change is one of those things that needed to be done yesterday. And what we're seeing out as we drive, as I, well, as I drove here, not out of my way home tonight, but it'll be a little dark, but when you, when you see those fence lines, and they're a foot taller than the rest of the field, it's, we've lost half our soil in the last century. And it's about food security. And, and when we see the seven to 10-inch rain that we used to get once every three, five years, now we're seeing it a few times a summer. I mean, that's, those are the discussions we need to be having out there. And one thing I would like to do is, when it comes to water quality, is, is have a strong but flexible conservation title in the farm bill. One that incentivizes the prairie strips and the buffer strips. And, and another thing I would like to do in the farm bill is put funding in there for research centers like the Leopold Center. And, and we've got to look at that as the future of our farming, and to see where we're at in 20 years and have that vision. So that's what I would like to do.
This probably will be our final question. Getting out of NAFTA will have a strong effect on Iowa. What would you do if elected to ensure that Iowa's economy is not devastated?
That's, that's one of the scariest things to me, is messing around with NAFTA. Because our, we have such reliance on, on exporting our corn down there. And like I mentioned earlier, what that would do, the 20% of corn that wouldn't longer no, go down there, they're already looking at places down, like in Brazil and stuff, to replace us. And I know what it was like. I was a kid. But I know what it was like in that farm crisis. And we had a neighbor who committed suicide, and that has always stood, stuck with me even though I was just a kid. And I'll be damned if I'm going to let that happen again. And so we got to find other avenues to, to find trade, trading partners. And, and to do it not only with our farmers, but also to do it with our labor too, and make sure that, that we have, really looking out for America. And, and what really frustrates me about the Trump administration is to make America great again. What the hell are we doing now? So.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. We have to do everything we can to keep NAFTA in play for the fourth district. I think we, we depend upon it. I think though, with the risk of losing NAFTA, if anything, that shows us that we have to diversify our agriculture. This idea that we can be dependent on corn and soybeans, I don't think is good for us in the long run. How do we go about doing that? I'm up for suggestions, but I think the, the thing we really have to kind of help our agriculture community do is help diversify their crops so that we won't be held over the barrel because of something like this. And sometimes disasters make things better. Back in, I think it was in Virginia, when the Bowe Weevil came through and destroyed the cotton crop, and they couldn't get rid of the Bowe Weevil, well, they learned to plant tobacco. Not a good example, I guess, but it made a lot of, but it made them a lot of money. And so the Bowe Weevil was like the best thing that could have ever happened to their agricultural economy. So with all disasters, with all stresses, good can come out of it. But I think if anything, with the concern about NAFTA, it should tell us that we have to diversify our agriculture. Again, I don't have a great plan for that right now. I'm up for suggestions, but I think that has to be a goal.
We do have time for another. Are there any issues on which you agree with Republicans?
Okay, are you ready to answer that? Oh, it's me? That's a good question. By the way, anytime anyone says that's a good question, they're thinking about what to say. I think many things, things that I agree with Republicans are not actually being pushed by the current Republican lawmakers. So do I agree with the things that are currently being pushed by these Republicans in Washington? I'm going to have a hard time finding something I agree with. I'm sure I can if I think about it hard enough, but I will have a hard time. But what I do respect for Republicans, traditional Republicans, is fiscal conservancy. And I think that needs to be something that we need to kind of bring back. I also have been always impressed with the fact that Republicans, though they don't always make laws to make this, they always push the family. And I think that that's something that I agree with, the emphasis on the family, and I think that that needs to be done. Maybe not in the same way they do it, but certainly in their general, their general philosophy. And, you know, I remember the time, when I was in medical school and Reagan was in office, we lived off that free cheese and free rice that they used to give. What they had was, they had all these surpluses of dairy, and they had surplus of rice. So what they ended up doing was, they paid the farmers for it, and they distributed it to poor people like me and my wife, and we ate. And it was the easiest thing to do. All we had to do was, we showed up, we showed them our W-2 from last year, and we got a big couple of chunks of American cheese and a big five-pound bag of rice. And that's what we ate off of in those days. And those type of compassionate conservatism is something that in the past I've really, really admired. My general philosophy is that I wouldn't want this country to be run by a bunch of liberal Democrats, but I don't want it also to be run by extremely conservative Republicans. I want them to be the yin and yang. I want us to kind of work on the things that will make our lives better, and I want the Republicans to help us, help us figure out how best to pay for it. So current Republican administration, I have a hard time. The ones in the past, I did agree with many of the things that they did.
I would say there's, there's two things. One, I, I think it is important to have a strong military and a strong defense. But like I mentioned previously, to have these never-ending wars, and, and that's, that's not what I'm for. Because with the military, we got the internet. And I, I think, the other thing with the military, one of the number one issues, the threat to America according to the military is climate change. And I think that's an avenue, a way of talking to folks about that. But the last thing, a, and again, what is a regular Republican right now? Because in 1989, in Reagan's farewell address, he talked about his shining city. And, and he said, it's, it's a place that has doors, and if the doors were open with all who have the will and the heart to be here. And, like, if, if that's what a Republican is, I'm all for that on immigration reform. And so.
Okay. If your question was not asked, I encourage you to contact our candidates. You can find the websites for all four of them, for the two that are not here. I want to remind you that there's LeAnn Jacobson and Paul Dahl. Find their websites, their contact information is there. Send them your questions. There's been a lot of talk about how are we going to beat Steve King? And part of that is getting a strong candidate. You can do your part by voting in the primary on June 5th. But we also need more than just your vote. Quite honestly, we need you to volunteer, we need you to donate, we need your help too. If you go to the caucuses on February 5th, get involved with the local party, come to our meetings, we, we need your help. And now I'm going to give each of them a five minutes to wrap up, or do your stump speech, or just however you want to work it. Since John went first, we'll have JD go first this time.
All right.
Sorry. Here, let me turn this off so it's not people on yet.
No problem.
There you go.
Well, first, thank you again so much for coming out here. I mean, this, this shows the level of engagement that we need and, and that's, and the excitement that's happening. And so thank you so much to, for making it out. One area that we didn't talk about that I wouldn't mind talking a little bit is, is the minimum wage. Now, the Democratic Party's very, they're talking a lot about the fight for 15, and I think that's, that's a great debate to have, and I'm for it. But that is putting a Band-Aid on a larger problem. And the larger problem is that America has yet to have an answer to globalization as it affects the working class. And so some of the things we're seeing, since 1979, the average worker's pay has gone up 8%, where the average CEO pay has gone up 80%. And what we're seeing in the district, we, like losing factories in Webster City, and in Spirit Lake, and in Cherokee, the fight for 15 isn't the, the fight that we need to be having. I mean, it is, but there's other fights too. The fight for 45,000, the fight for 50,000, the fight for $75,000 jobs. We're graduating our, our kids from college, and we don't have an economy that's ready to absorb them. And, and that's a fight that, and a discussion that we need to have in this district. Moving on, remember Rita DeYoung. We need you, we need your help. And if, if there's one thing you can talk away, like, one thing that can help our race right now is winning in Sioux City right now. It's, it's a race that, last time we had a candidate, but the four previous times, we didn't have a candidate for. And we got a good candidate, and we have a chance, because in the special election that happened in the Senate race, that, and if you take the section that is, is my district, we, we would have won. And so we have a legitimate chance, but we, we got to get those folks out, and, and so get on those phones, and I urge you to help Rita out. And I'll end you with this, we, most of the people in here are all want, want change in November, if not all the people. And his politics, politics of the vision, the incumbent's, politics of the division is not what I stand for. I stand for inclusiveness. And my campaign is about fighting for an inclusive healthcare. And it's about fighting for an inclusive economy, and it's about fighting for an inclusive community. And so my campaign is about beating Steve King. But we're also starting a movement. And that movement, it's larger than this campaign, and, and I hope it's larger than this race, and it's something that is felt for several cycles. And it's about organizing. And, and it, it's about, the movement is about re-invoking the voice of the working class in this district, and about redefining what it means to be a Democrat in the fourth congressional district, and re-establishing what it is to be a Democrat in the fourth, fourth congressional district. And so with that, we can truly build a fourth district in Iowa and America that stands tall for all. So thanks again for having me, and everyone get home safe. Thank you.
I, I would like to thank all of you also for coming out. This is fantastic. I want to thank Matty Anderson for organizing this. I really appreciate it. I want to thank JD, I always enjoy it when I listen to him speak, and I always enjoy kind of being in the same room with him. I'd like to finish up with a little discussion about diversity. About four or five weeks ago, Steve King tweeted that diversity is not the strength of our country. And then he went and he quoted a Hungarian prime minister who is the, is a proponent of the anti-immigration movement in Europe. And he's wrong. Diversity has always been the strength of our country. We have always opened our shores to people who have not felt welcome in their homeland due to social, economic, or religious reasons. Our country was built from the original 13 colonies whose children were, were, they were the children of the rejects of Europe. In the 30s, when the Nazis took over Germany, we had an influx of people into this country. Does that mean we're done? Oh, there you go.
Ross, are you doing that?
Okay, oh, thank you. All right, okay, there you go. That wasn't even my five minutes. Anyways, we, 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 okay. We, we, basically, we had an influx of people at that time, and with them, they brought their intellectual ability and the moral fiber to help us defeat, defeat the evil that was rising out of Europe. When I'm in my practice, I see many children whose parents are not originally from this country. And I see the hope in their eyes, and I look into them, and I see the future. And I see in those children, children that will grow up and take care of me when I get older. But I look farther into the future, and I see their children taking care of my grandchildren as ER physicians. I see innovators of new technology. I see creators of jobs in those children. I see people who will develop cures for diseases that keep me up at night. Steve King is wrong. Diversity has always been a strength of our country. And I might want to add that our country is great right now, not because, and it's always been great, not because of the color of our skin, but because of the strength of our character. In this election, you're going to have a choice of four candidates to go up against Steve King. And for the first time, you've had a primary. If anyone tells you that this is not an important election, you know how wrong they are. You have a big, you have a big job to do. You have to choose the candidate that you feel is the best, not only to beat Steve King, but to do a job, a good job in Washington. And I'll tell you, I think we've got some good choices. So let's get out there, let's get involved with the caucuses, let's make sure we vote in the primary. Thanks again for coming. Again, John Patrick.
Thank you all for coming. There will be a recording of this on YouTube in about a week, when Denny gets it edited. We're going to thank him for that. You can find that on our Facebook page, Story County Democrats of Iowa. I'll also put it on our storydemms.org, if you'll find it under the candidates link. Just quickly want to thank our chair, Jan Bauer, who is back there somewhere, I see her, and our vice chair, John Klaus, Denny Goodrich, who did the video for us, and the ever hard-working Dustin Mason, and Carter Griffith. And Jim, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, but thank you for coming and helping us set up and tear down. Have a good evening, everybody, have a safe drive home.